We'll now convene this February 6, 2025, meeting of the Central Town Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with agenda review. Just one note, the agenda that I think was on the website had an error, right? It was on the town's website. Carolyn?
Oh, the sponsorship of Orange is One.
So that's been updated here to reflect Councilmember Beecham. It had previously said Council President, which is used for code cleanup, which this is not. This is more of a change to the code than code cleanup. So that's on our, the agenda's in front of us and those out there, but was different than what was advertised. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? No? Okay. Next, council in your packets and sent to you previously, you have the minutes from the January 16th meeting. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 16th Town Council meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, I will read a closed session statement. Closed session announcement regarding Town Council, closed session, February 6, 2025. The Town Council met in closed session on Thursday, February 6, 2025, at 6:15 PM to discuss personnel and legal advice in accordance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. Three members of the Town Council voted to close the session. The authority to close the session is found in Section 3305 of the General Provisions article. The Town Council discussed the following topic: Personnel and Legal Advice. The following, no actions were taken. The following members and staff were present: Ashley H. Kaiser, President; Daniel B. Worth, who joined a few minutes into the session; Jim A. Beecham and Sandra Lee Huffer, Members; Shannon Van den Berg, Town Attorney; Carolyn Brinkley, Town Manager; and Gay Adams, Town Clerk. The meeting was adjourned at 6:42 PM. Okay. Next up, we have our first Citizens Forum. Citizens are requested to keep their comments to three minutes. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council? Awesome, come on up. He's going to bring the microphone up. And if you could just state your name for the record.
Good evening. Is it? Good evening, my name's Linda Friday. I'm the President of the Queen Anne's County Chamber of Commerce. And tonight, I'd like to present the Town Council with a celebration of 230 years, a milestone that we presented to all of our businesses that are celebrating milestones throughout the year, years. And this year was your lucky year, or last year, I should say, 2024. Not one of you look like you're 230 years, so that's probably a good thing. But anyway, we'd like to congratulate you and present you with a stone.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Can we get a picture? Let's all go.
Absolutely.
Whole gang. Get on in here, Linda.
Thank you, congratulations.
They're cool. They're cool.
That's our second meeting, second lady in the room.
See how many pages we can get awards at? Awesome, are there any other citizens that wish to address the council at this time? I thought, I thought the drug-free people. Come on up.
Yeah, come on up there, yeah.
Citizens Forum isn't over yet.
Right. Okay. And I don't know if we're on the agenda at all, something that we talked about for the signs. I'm Warren Wright, by the way. I'm a volunteer for Queen Anne's County Drug Free Coalition. And we were here at two, and I think one of the commissioners talked to a couple of you guys about possible use of the two signs in and out of the city. As you know, Drug Free Coalition, you guys let us use those every September when we do our QA Goes Purple. But in the past few years, we've had a Moore's Grant that involves the students in Queen Anne's County, Drug Free Student Ambassadors. You guys might have heard of them. Some of their posters are right outside. Some of them are in the other county buildings, they're in the schools. That's kind of a big event for them. As you go out of town, they just put up another billboard. It's the three, he no evil speak, the three monks, it's only, it's a drug message. If you'll remember, the last time we did purple right out here, it rained like heck. But the student ambassadors, they got more people to come over and watch the stuff than the Army Rock Band, which we had brought in for that day. So anyway, the request is, we know that purple during September, we asked you guys if we could use those signs. They have several events that occurred during the year two or three. And the request is, could the student, Drug Free Student Ambassadors, use those signs? If they're not already busy sometimes during the, during this, the school year. And that's all it was, was that. But I did want to mention just one thing, only because we're really proud of it, and I didn't do anything. The student, Drug Free Student Ambassadors, this year won the national, I think it was the fentanyl, the National Anti-Fentanyl Contest through SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health National Conference. And last week, they presented it at the national conference. And I just have to say, because I'm there, two things. One, they packed the room, they had people ask 30 questions, and they asked, stayed an hour longer. Really impressed with the student ambassadors, they come up with great ideas. The other thing, just as a side note, if you go to the Gaylord, parking is now $43 a day. And if you go out for lunch, they double it. So I guess our request is, could, would it be possible for the students, with permission, of course, from you guys and approval of the content, could they use your signs three or four times during the school year? If they're not, they're not busy otherwise. So that was my, that was my question. I didn't know if it was on the, because it just came up today, I didn't know if that was on your agenda, but I didn't want to not get that in.
Yeah, you just have to come into Town Hall, we, we have a little form to fill out, and we can, we can reserve it.
That would be great, thank you all very much.
That's really cool, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council at this time? All right, cool. Next up is new business, and we've got Karen Lufman, our Finance Officer, with the FY25 Budget Update.
Good morning, just kidding. So I wanted to give you, I know it's a little later than normal. It's been kind of crazy busy lately with getting audit wrapped up and working on the ARPA obligations. So this is the mid-year update for General Enterprise Fund as of 12/31/25. In your, in the packet, you'll have a memo kind of summarizing, and then the actual packet, if you wanted to actually see, break down specific numbers. So as of January 1st, which would be the mid-year mark, department should be at around 50% spent, you know, based on that benchmark. General Fund revenues, at this moment, we've received 67% of revenues expected. And that's because we get a lot of our, like our property tax, our biggest payment comes in October. So we'll see that, January would be our next biggest payment. Local income tax is a little under 50%. That's basically because they're usually a few months behind. You know, we're August, September, into the new year, still getting the previous year payments. So they lag a little bit. As far as the expense side goes on the general fund, all departments are at or below 50% with the exception of the cemetery, which is at 56. So it's better than it has been in previous years, usually we're at like 70 by this point. So again, it's a hard benchmark to estimate each year, but we try. Enterprise Fund revenues, we're at about 47% six months into the year. Things that affect this is the timing of the billing, any, if we have allocation, interest rates and such. I will say, I've noticed a decrease in some of the revenues as far as expected for the fiscal year. And I think that has to do with maybe people using less, but also we did have some issues with systems. And as we were switching back, we, there was fees we lost out. We just couldn't do some of the things because we weren't sure of how accurate the information was in the old system. So we're back on track now, back in the other system, so things should get smoother. All enterprise fund accounts at this moment are at or below 50% spent. So out of all the town's budget, there's one that's over 50, and that's the cemetery at 56. The pension expense, again, it pays in December, so if you see that it's a, it's almost at the max of what it's supposed to be, it's because we only make one payment. You don't see the debt payments in the enterprise fund as they show in liability accounts. And then we did the last MOU for ARPA funds to obligate all funds by December 31st. We are in compliance, and I will report that with our funding report in March. So that's all I have, I didn't know if you.
So things are pretty flat in general. So do you anticipate, do you have any concern over the next six months of something that may be coming that there could be a shortfall or?
I don't anticipate a shortfall in any way.
Just relating to budget?
I will say, interest rates have started to drop some, so we, you know, our ICS is, has dropped probably a half percent. So we were above five, we're a little under five now. I imagine we may see some more dropping there. Carolyn and I have been keeping an eye on it, so that if we get to a point where we're worried it's going to drop fast, we can see if we can lock in, probably up to six months with them. But right now, we're still earning 4.8%, which is great. All departments are spending well, capital is going well. So no, I don't see any, any shortfalls thus far. Last year at this time, there were a couple of departments over 50%, so I'm impressed with how they're doing so far this year.
Right, right.
Well, we put it in the budget to be available to spend, so if they need it, spend it. But I appreciate your diligence on this, and the memos, the summaries, just great, very helpful. Just a quick read, and we know exactly where we are.
Absolutely. And like I said, if you go through this later and you have more questions, y'all, ever text me, call me, whatever you need.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have sidewalk trash and yard waste updates. Wow, doesn't it get more exciting than that list?
For the amount of paper you have in your packets on this, I'll try and keep this brief. I'm hoping you all have a chance to read it and everything, because I'm not going to go page by page with it. I'm basically here to answer any questions from the information that you've got. Just wanted to go over the considerations as we move forward from here. You know, we're looking for input from you folks as to where you'd like to start with a sidewalk replacement program. Big thing is budget. We're starting on, work on the budget process now. So, you know, want to know how much your thought is on putting towards us and where it's going to come from. You know, of course, with the amount of work that has to be done, a dollar figure associated, is this something that you'd like to fund many years out and just keep up with it? So those are the questions I had for you, and.
Yeah, I, I thought we would treat it like we do the roads. We try to repair one road a year at least, we could do section of sidewalk. Or in this case, it looks like we have a whole quadrant of sidewalks that could be.
Well, that's just like a, that's a snapshot of the town.
Yeah.
Only about a fourth is what I figured of the sidewalks we have.
Right.
So.
I'd love to see us create a policy for how, so like insular neighborhood roads, to me, would be a lower priority than, say, Tillman Ave. Where, like, which is a walking path for people, and also has that senior housing on it. Like, some sort of way to figure out, like, if it's a stoplight chart or something, how you get, how your sidewalk gets prioritized, right? So to me, if it's totally contained in a cul-de-sac and it only affects the people that live right there, that would be less important than if, like Railroad Avenue has a sidewalk issue, which is like a larger pedestrian.
Pretty much every sidewalk going to the high school on that side of town, really. I mean, that, that's why we have most of the walkers.
Priorities for snow, speaking of snow, we'll get to that later. But it's like that priority, you know, where's the traffic? So in this case, where's the pedestrian traffic?
And I'm not saying that everybody doesn't deserve to get theirs repaired, but just like with the roads, we prioritized getting everything done on more major thoroughfares before we worry about like a smaller street.
Right.
So I appreciate this information, fascinated, honestly. But I think we need to get our arms around how, how things get on the list, and then that will help us determine how we resource it. It's not going to be done overnight, that's for sure.
Grinding that was proposed in here, that's a great solution, I've seen that used in other places as well. But it doesn't work for every situation, does it?
No, no. As you can see on, back in the pages of that proposal, it was marked on there, there was a one color for sidewalks that it would work on, but there was other ones listed there as replacement. There were just, they were just too out of line to just trim it from under there.
And it's significant that they can trim, because I had them come look at mine, and it's like two inches, or once it exceeds like two inches or something, they can't, or like how separate it becomes.
Depends on the depth of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, the pour for the sidewalk, two inches may not be bad if the slab is six inches deep.
Right.
But also to keep in mind with this, there is places where the sidewalks are very bad, but the curb is very bad also. And we can go through and replace the sidewalk, but if the sidewalk meets the curb, there's no green strip in between there, you're throwing good money out for bed, because if you decide to five years down the road redo the curb, you got to start over again with the sidewalk, because you just can't excavate the curb and be done. It's going to wind up going back and undermining under the sidewalk, so.
So those considerations could be part of that.
Right.
Because I, what I really am afraid of and don't want it to become is like a squeaky wheel situation, where just because somebody calls Town Hall, the most times their sidewalk gets fixed, and there may be somebody who just doesn't have the ability to call Town Hall every day that does it. Like, so it's some objective reasoning that's used to put a sidewalk on the list for repair.
And it happens like that. We've had concerns come in about, you know, come look at sidewalks, see how bad it is. And it's just some surface pitting on it where other places that you go and you see, and it's disjointed by two or three inches, or it's settled so bad that the sidewalk is on a bad tilt. So, yeah, it happens.
Yeah, so let's, can we, can we ask you and your team to come up with a suggestion of how we might triage these?
We can work on it, it's going to take, it's going to take a good bit of time.
For sure.
We'll see if we can come up with something.
There's probably a matrix with what's causing the problem, too.
Yes, you have to look at that as well.
Low-hanging fruit, you know, what's easiest to repair in the high-traffic areas and.
Right.
So I'm painfully aware of tree roots changing sidewalks. What are some of the other causes?
Settling underneath the sidewalks in the newer developments like Northbrook. Not so much at Symphony Village, but there is some in Symphony Village. There's places that the trench repair from the utilities, when they were originally put in, just didn't compact well, and it settled and it lined up. When you have a utility trench that's 24 to 36 inches wide, and after the years it settles in, well, if a joint happens to be in the middle, you've got two sections of sidewalk falling in. Or else you've got one falling in and one staying in a static at the original grade. So those are some of the things. Others, there's places where waters ran underneath of it and just washed the, eroded the dirt underneath of it, and nothing left for it to sit on on one side like that.
If we left it up to you, what would you suggest we put in this coming budget for sidewalk repair?
Well, that's why I was kind of coming to you to.
I said if, I'm not saying we are going to leave it to you, but if we were to leave it to you. And is a four-year cycle, a 10-year cycle, what Council President was, was alluding to?
That's, that's kind of the thing, how, how much do you want to spend? If you're asking me, I will come up with something for you. But even if we set it up on a cycle where we're trying to get through the whole town and still, you know, have a budget to work with, it's pretty much going to be like painting the Bay Bridge. Soon as they get to the other end of it, you go back and start again.
Right.
So, and like you were saying, we do try to do road reconstruction projects. We don't do it every year, because that would be great if we could afford it. But with those, we're definitely doing new curb gutter sidewalks. So that can help eliminate some of, some of them in this budget that we know we're going to come back and get at a later time.
Well, it seems like, it seems like we need a good amount of money initially, because we have deferred the sidewalk repair for quite a long time.
Decades of.
Yes, right, so.
You're looking to knock a whole lot of it out? You're not going to get through it all in one year.
Right, right.
I don't think any of us is counting on that.
Five-year, 10-year plan.
I would say three-year plan.
Looks like you could do a lot for like 200K a year.
No? Well, there's a lot of sidewalks that have to be fixed.
These are rough numbers, but yes, if you wanted to spend 200,000 a year, you might be able to fit it in a three-year project.
Yeah, I think that's aggressive, my opinion, I think that's aggressive. I think five to, you know, five to say eight years, something like that. And then we talked a little bit offline about the report you did, and now it's only a quarter of, they didn't look at the whole town. So I think with your experience of just high traffic, come up with a policy, high traffic, and then what are the things that are a public safety problem, you know? To hit those first, and then to create kind of a map that's like, here's, here. So then the public knows, the community knows, like, here's, here it is. Because I've gone to town sites, and they have for five years, and they show here's how this money is going to be spent over the next five years. So there's, there's no question about, well, what are they going to do this year? I wonder what the budget process will come up for. You kind of show them over the next five years, are you in this? At least you know whether you are or not in it. So I think it needs to be formalized from that perspective, in my opinion.
Yep.
So are you saying that then fix, you know, set a, a time that we would fix all the sidewalks, like a five years or 10-year period? And then just kind of divide by 10 or five or whatever it is? Right, that's what it is.
Yeah, so whatever makes.
So you're going to fix them all and?
Yeah, and I don't know, as far as, I haven't walked every sidewalk in town, how to know? Like, you know, which ones are the most dangerous, some know it. But like, where are your, where are your high, what are your hotspots for public safety? And maybe just start there to kind of at least know what the cost factor is, because we're coming to the budget cycle. And so, you know, how much, I mean, I think 200,000 might be a stretch. I haven't gotten through a budget cycle here yet, but that might be a stretch.
Right.
Right, is my initial gut reaction, but maybe it's like 50 or something to say, let's, we're starting a process, and here's how we're going to move forward through the process.
Sure.
And there used to be that sidewalk fund in there, and it wasn't getting used.
It was 30,000, yes.
It was 30,000 that wasn't used.
Yeah, it wasn't getting used, and so having a policy.
Because we didn't have a policy to.
Right. So I think we have to have a policy, and then we have to use the money.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that it's, like I said, it's not, I have the time to call Town Hall the most, so my sidewalk gets fixed, and that it makes sense.
Yeah, but it also makes sense, like you're saying, go for the low-hanging fruit, the traffic areas.
The worst-case scenarios.
Worst-case scenarios, that kind of thing. And then we'll just play in, into it, the ones that we can do, you know?
Yeah.
As it appears.
And for pricing, too, like if something makes sense because we're going to, I'm just going to use Tillman Ave as an example, because that's one that just seems like really bad.
It is, yeah.
Let's say we're fixing that, and for pricing from the contractor, it makes sense to also fix two adjacent streets that may not otherwise, you know, I mean, let's be smart, right? I just don't know that we need to go fix, you know, every cul-de-sac in every subdivision.
No.
First.
Right, I agree.
Symphony Village did some of the shaving down of theirs, they had a contractor come do it.
Yep, it's the same contractor.
Yeah, it seems like an improvement.
Yes.
In there, they all walk on the street, though, anyway.
Don't you also have some street projects you want to do, too?
Yes.
So that would eliminate some, some of the sidewalks on.
Right, I mean.
Right, that's what you're saying.
Right now, we've, we're looking at Tillman Ave and Belvedere with some of that congressional earmark on it.
Right, that'd be great.
Providing we still have the money.
Hey, you never know.
Yeah, I know, but we're hopeful and we're moving forward to work on it, so.
Get it while you can.
So that eliminates both of those streets right there.
Yeah, and I just keep using Tillman as an example, because it's like the first one that pops to my mind, like the sidewalk problem.
Sidewalk is very bad there.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so how much, so how much time do you need as far as, Karen, we have to prepare for the next cycle. We may not know all the details, but we allocate a certain amount of dollars for as far as how much time you would need.
I'll do my best to have it, something for you before we get all the way through the budget process. So at least, when you approve the budget, this is how much we should be looking at spending.
Yeah, awesome, I just really want town staff to have something they can point to. Like, we, the council's prioritized funding for this, and this is where we've, you know, committed that this year, or whatever.
And even if we don't have concrete estimates on it, we still can do the sidewalk fund approach.
Yes.
And then Kip can draw on it as he gets to things, that has a contractor to tackle things, there's a pot of money there.
I am personally less concerned about estimates heading into the budget, because the money's going to be finite to whatever we can do, and more concerned about Kip having the direction he needs, that we are not sitting up here picking and choosing side. Like, I want to remove us from the process.
Yeah, right.
We approve a policy, and then Public Works goes and follows the policy and move on.
Yeah, we don't pick, we don't pick the streets, so we should be picking sidewalks, right?
The policy, and then we remove any sort of subjectivity from the equation.
Yep.
All right, trash and yard waste.
Okay, trash and yard waste. You want to see some numbers on where we are with it and everything? As I had said at one of the previous meetings, we have one more year contract extension that we can do from July 1st till June 30th of 2026. Yes, 26, thank you. So anyhow, if you choose to do that, that's definitely the easier and cheapest way to go. I've got some information in here on the costs of compared to the way we're doing it now, opposed to if we have to go out for contract, which you may be able to get an idea how in a larger company would do, what you would hope and to see better service from, but.
You probably remember, I know I remember, how painful it was to negotiate the contract we're using now.
Yes.
That took, that was the longest process of anything council did in the six years I was on council.
Yeah.
It was painful.
It was, and one of those years, we did kind of to, as an information gathering besides contract, because we were looking at all different options, you know, whether the contractor supplied the, you know, the garbage cans, whether they dumped the cans that the town would supply, or leave it that the homeowner supplies on. that the town would supply or leave it that the homeowner supplies and those kind of things.
So is the automated claw that?
The automated, right. Yeah, whether it was automated, like Jim says, with claw that picks a can up and dump it, we found out that wouldn't work extremely well in our situation because there's too much on-street parking for people to get their trash to the curb for developments. That's where that kind of thing fits in a whole lot better. The other thing we looked at was, you know, the semi, semi automated where they wheel the dumpster or cart over to the back of the truck and the truck picks it up and dumps it. The thing with that is everybody's got to have the brake on the trash can for that to work with. So, yep, there's plenty of stuff to consider with it, but.
Well, I brought that up to encourage us to not get ourselves in a bind.
But you convinced me. Convinced me we should start. I think we should do the extension and then also start the process.
Okay, we can.
For next year.
We can, my feeling is, because we've had, we've learned quite a bit on these past few times we've contracted out, as long as we know by December and get started, then we should be able to have something out. Because we also want to try and get the prices so that we can include it in the budget process as we go. So we're hoping that it's not as bad as it has been these past, these past times we've contracted out. So we'll, we'll start on that.
Do we need a vote to do the extension or can you just do that?
I think we can just sign the, yeah. Unless you want, and if you want to, just.
Voice vote wouldn't hurt anybody's feelings, would it?
Yeah, we can do that. Do we have a motion to extend the trash recycling contract for its last option?
Move to extend the sanitation contract for its last option year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay.
But I would like to say that, because I know the service has been, you know, challenging and as far as the quality, that I think a bid proposal is necessary for the next year because I know there's been a lot of complaints and as far as relating to the service. You mentioned that last month's meeting, they're not telling you how much is recycled, they have terrible reporting. So I think this for the next one-year extension, but I think it needs to be seriously looked at for following.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
And yard waste?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to talk about yard waste?
Oh, yard waste, it's on, yard waste is very easy for us. Of course, it's a hometown contractor that does it for us and they're very, him and his staff are very good. They're, they adhere to the policy of what can be taken and what can't be and those kinds of things. That contract actually runs on, I think we've got extensions for it. Let me see if I put it in there.
I think it's, runs the same, the same as the trash.
It's longer than the trash.
It's longer than?
It says it goes to twenty-six on here too. Oh, no, and then there's two options after that.
Yeah, that's the current one. Sorry, I guess didn't put it on there, but yeah, I think it goes up to twenty-eight.
Yeah, it looks like it because it says two additional extensions.
Okay.
So it's on here. Where are they dumping the yard waste, still at the farm or?
Yes, we stockpile that farm and then we have a contractor come in and grind it up in the mulch. That's actually working out very good for us.
Awesome.
It's cheaper than what tipping fee was for it to begin with when we were taking it to a landfill that wouldn't permit it for it.
Yeah, and what's done with the mulch? I forget.
I'm sorry.
What's done with the mulch once it's mulched?
The most part, what we use for is on the farm. It's not.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's, it's not certified playground mulch, so we can't very well use it for the playgrounds. The, it's hasn't, we haven't had a stockpile long enough that has been digesting to be used for flower beds and landscaping.
Yeah, that's fine, but you just use it on the farm.
Yeah, we use it around the farm. Some of it we use to fill some places along the woods where, you know, trying to head off some erosion and things like that. Yep.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right, next up, we have our first ordinance of 2025, ordinance zero-one-two-zero-twenty-five, amending chapter one-fifty-eight. This is the first reading.
Sure, so we have had an ordinance in place about unattached trailers in town as a violation. It's been frustrating to administer from the town manager's perspective and also from PD. This expands it a little bit and one thing that it specifically addresses is occupiable RV-type trailers and motorhomes. And we've had a couple of situations where I felt like the trailers were sort of subverting the zoning ordinance and the concept of single-family residential and accessory structure code as well. So I thought having only a couple of instances under our belt, we probably ought to address this now before it goes much farther and is a little more, little more ingrained. So a couple of things that are significant in here, worked with our town attorney on this and I think you had other examples that you looked to to help get the language in it a reasonable way. But one of the things I want to point out is we did have, we did incorporate a time allowance, if you have an RV, to bring it to your house for provisioning to get it ready to go and also then a similar interval of time for, for decommissioning after you've, you've used your vehicle. And I've had an RV for more than half my life, so I have a little familiarity with that and how that process works and tried to be sensitive to that in this ordinance. So I don't know what else to say. I'm sure you've all read it. It's not that dramatic. It does give us some more teeth for enforcement and hopefully it will help, help make the town a little safer place, a little more consistency as well.
Well, well, it does say that basically, it looks like you can't park a trailer, a trailer that's attached to a vehicle on, on the street. That's, that's what it's saying. We allow that now, right?
We do.
Okay.
Right, so currently it has to be attached and this would make it so it does not have to be, it can't be there at all. Currently, it has to be attached to its beast of burden is what the code says.
And that's, that's really difficult to enforce.
Well, I can understand that with a recreational vehicle that someone could live in, but, you know, a utility trailer or, you know, we, you know, we have some small businesses in town, they have their toll trailers or whatever. They would be required to, but not everybody has driveways. I mean, Liberty and Commerce Street, they have the houses there don't have driveways. I mean, we're a means to even get to their backyard. I mean, they have no backyard, you know? So.
I saw, so have issue with it because of boats. We're living a boating community. I understand boats are, sometimes people, because I did code enforcement, so they try to trick you and back the truck up to the boat and say it's hooked up. No, it's not hooked up.
Right.
I have a problem with the boats. I really have a problem with the campers because people park them everywhere and I understand that, but the boating thing is what I have a problem with. Because a lot of people own boats and they don't have a yard to put their boats in.
Understood. If we could separate that out, but still have it in an enforceable way, because as you could probably understand, an unattached trailer is a real traffic hazard.
Oh, it is.
Have adequate reflective lighting and those sort of factors are.
And most of the time, there's not a vehicle in front, in front of that trailer.
And that's a problem.
Yes.
A real problem. And, you know, the bigger ones are a danger for people trying to get out of their driveway where you can't see around it.
Absolutely, yeah, oh, yeah.
So it's hard to find that sweet spot.
Yep.
That addresses all the situations fairly.
Yes.
Sometimes you just have to draw the broad brush and go from there. But if you have some suggestions on how to improve this, I'm all ears.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like, because I'm thinking it's really just a bulk thing. I mean, it doesn't really, you know, yeah, like you say, if it's too large, you can't see around it, you have a difficult time getting out of a driveway. It wouldn't matter if it was a camper or a, a large utility trailer, you know, those can be, you know, I've seen some landscaping trailers, not necessarily parked in town, but you see them going through. It's like, yeah, somebody parked one of those in front of my house, I wouldn't like that very much.
And maybe it's the size limitation.
Even if they had their pickup truck hooked up to it, you know? It's like, well, you know, but somebody with a, with a, you know, a small trailer, you know, with their, you know, with their lawnmower in it or whatever, you know, that's, that's a lot of big deal.
They even put them on different streets so they don't think they're yours. They put it around the corner from their house. When I did code enforcement.
There was a boat registered to someone in Denton parked on Green Street for like six months.
Did it, I counted fifty-eight unattached trailers from that, the last couple of weeks I did code enforcement, fifty-eight all over the town, not just in a specific community, but all over and anything.
And they weren't attached.
And they weren't attached and they were from boats to campers to utility trailers, to enclosed trailers, any type of trailer you think. Like I said, they, now they'll park it around the corner from their house. There's one neighborhood that's famous for that. They park it around the corner from their house. They have to call the police department to see, can you run the tank and see who owns this for me? Oh, yes, it was a pain, but there is, there is a problem with unattached trailers in the town, I agree a hundred percent.
Right.
I would be, could we do a size? Sharon, could we do a size limitation so like if it's a small boat or small landscape trailer, that that could fall under the current code of having to be attached? But something larger that does create, you know, difficulty to see coming out of a driveway or turning a corner or crossing the crosswalk or those things.
Right. I know you've seen my twenty-four-foot trailer when I've had it in front of my house and it's, it's a beast. It's hard to see around.
Yeah.
And it takes half an hour to unhook it up and hook it back up, so it's not like I'm going to leave it unattached.
Yeah, so it's a length and a height. Well, yeah, it's a height thing too, right? So a bulk.
And then that would allow for a recreational boater, but not allow like a larger commercial boat situation to be left on the town street.
Yes.
And it probably wouldn't be large enough to live in if, if you, you know, got the size down small enough for it to be limited.
Right.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Hey, leave camper trailers without any side, size constraints, because some of the pop-ups could fit in that constraint.
That's true, those are really.
Housing people over the weekends.
I agree with that. I think we have to be really firm on the not living in it factor.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
We, I mean, we don't want to become, at least I don't, want the town to become somewhere you just park your trailer and live in it in front of a public street or someone else's house or.
Or have guests come and stay in it and what do you do with the holding tank and?
Yeah. All right, well, this is the first reading, so when will the public hearing be?
It would be the first, the earliest it could be is the first meeting in March.
March sixth.
There is a sentence here that on the second thought, I have suggested that we keep. It is the last sentence in section one-fifty-eight dash one. However, this chapter shall not apply to any carriage, shed, or buggy parked on any street, alley, lanes within the town of Centerville while said carriage, sled or buggy is attached to said beast of burden. I think just out of a respect to history, we leave that sentence in there.
Just for the fun of it, yeah.
If you got a horse-drawn carriage, good for you.
I put my buggy out front now.
I'll leave your horses there.
I was reminiscing with Sharon that ten years ago, we revised the parking ordinance and we left intact that you could leave your ox cart around the courthouse over the weekend.
Okay, well, lots more conversation to be had on this, but appreciate the work both you and Sharon have done to get us here. Okay, any other discussion on this one before we move on? All right, ordinance two-dash-two-zero-twenty-five, moratorium extension. This is another first reading. Council member Work?
All right, yeah, we discussed this a little bit at the last, our last meeting. The planning commission had a work session last night and discussed it and they kind of went into detail of all the tasks that remain to be completed and they really think that six months would be more appropriate. So I would like to amend it, introduction here to be a six-month extension of the moratorium rather than three months.
Is there a rationale from one direction or another on the seven EDUs? Whether it's an engineering concept or whether it's related to other facets in our ordinances where that's a tipping point? Because I know we heard in our last meeting from our public works director that the farm is suffering right now. Even though we're not at capacity of our permit for the plant, that the farm is struggling to keep up. So I'm worried about any of them and I hate to just call it quits on anything, but I just wonder what the seven, where that came from.
Well, that, that, that's related to the, they, they want to set a limit on the size of a project and we don't have a definition of small project versus large project. So seven EDUs kind of got us, is roughly the way the county defines.
That was a point of reference.
Small development versus large one, right? We wanted to keep things small, so that's really.
I was just looking for a point of reference and you say it's county regulations that.
Yeah, compatible with them, so.
Okay, I have comments. So I was at the meeting last night as well. I have concerns about the, you know, as far as the adding on additional time. And I did hear as far as at the meeting, because the current, you know, Stacy, who's the, you know, for planning, she's part-time. And I think it's important, I think, to, to pass any type of additional moratorium time, which was discussed at the meeting last night, to have a specific, I think, town council to say, well, how are you going to get to that endpoint? Because, you know, like a schedule of how the next, whether it's three months or six months, as far as how you're going to work through this. Because I've been at the meetings as far as having the discussions about it and I just think there needs to be kind of clarity as far as what that deadline is and how you back up from that in order to get to that. Because I know it's during work sessions and that was discussed last night about having to do larger work sessions in order to get through this. Because it is, it is important, it absolutely is important relating to development that will be coming as far as for the annexation, I understand that. But I think there needs to be some more specifics from what I would like from planning, planning commission to say what this is. It was mentioned to have a letter or something to say, well, how is it that you would get to that, the three-month extension to be able, to really get it, to be able to get it done? Because I think prioritization of it needs to happen in focus, which is also discussed at last night's meeting as well, to really focus on the deadline in order to get, because it is very important to the town. I understand the importance of it. And as it relates to what resources you need to, to happen, again, from Stacy, additional time, I don't know what the answer is, but in order to meet that timeline, I think it's important to have that more framed out and more specific than just extending the moratorium and say, here, now, you know, go at it. That's, that's just my point, to have more formality, you know, relating to that and the schedule of how you're going to get to the endpoint of that. Because what I also heard at the meeting was if you have it, just say, because at that point, you would have to have it to June to town council, I think I heard that correctly, because town council is going to need some time to look at this as well. It's not going to be like, well, that looks good, move on, because this is, this is important. And so we'll need time to look at it. So then really, how much time you need to add on in order to have it done? So I just think there needs to be some more formality about it. That would be my only, my comments.
Okay, yeah, because this does have to go to the planning commission for their recommendation, so they, they could include that in their recommendation letter, so, okay.
All right. Public hearing the same. Okay.
Right, so it's just six months instead of three months mainly, that's.
Okay. Nothing else on this? Great. Next up, we have reports of boards and commissions, Maryland Municipal League.
Nothing significant to report. We're in the middle of legislative session. I think they are all hands on deck trying to keep up with legislation.
Awesome. Council of government?
No meeting last month, we have one next Wednesday.
And that'll be the tax setup.
Tax, tax setup, yeah.
It's next.
Wednesday.
Wednesday to twelve.
It was canceled last week, our last month because of the snow.
Right, because of the snow. That's here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A sense of, I'm sorry, do we have a sense of how the current county commissioners are viewing tax setup?
They have a, an equation, and that's all they're using. Unless there's, um, services that are added or taken away, then everything pretty much stays status quo.
Thank you.
All right. Economic development. Um, looking at, first I want to say thank you to the residents that have submitted applications to serve on SEDA. Trying to map applicants to the existing makeup in SEDA, it just has us looking at the makeup of SEDA and, and what may have made sense when it was first created and what makes sense now. And so, at the next public meeting, we'll look at a proposal for a restructure of SEDA. Um, just a different membership outlay than what's currently there before we, I want to make sure we get this right. So, before we appoint people to the commission, I want to make sure that it's set up in the way that serves the town for the future. So, still in a holding pattern there, but not, that we're not paying attention to it, just not ready to move forward yet. Park advisory board?
Um, nothing really to report.
Okay. Planning commission?
Um, well, the planning commission worked on the, uh, the code changes to, for, um, complete neighborhoods. Um, they, uh, the draft code is now up to eleven pages long, so, um, it's getting bigger and bigger, so it's, it'd be a lot for us to look at at some point in the future. Um, we also discussed, there was an issue, um, at the last, um, regular meeting that, uh, it looked like GTI did not provide, um, the trees that were required for tree canopy coverage, um, it, that were specified in the public works agreement and also in the, um, approved, um, site plan. And so, um, they, when they come back to the planning commission at their neck, the next meeting, they're gonna either, um, and it, it's really up to the planning commission to decide whether they're gonna plant trees or just take a fee in lieu. So, um, my thoughts is a fee in lieu would be fine, because I think where we're gonna do trees is on state highway property that we don't have yet, you know, rather than making them plant somewhere we don't really need them, you know? But anyway, that, but it's up to the planning commission really.
Got it.
Unless somebody has a strong opinion on that, so. And then, um, yeah, so GTI's coming back. There's also a public hearing on the comp plan, um, map changes, um, and also, I think, YMCA pool or something, is that, who else is coming back? There's, there's three things, I think.
Yeah, YMCA pool was one of them.
Oh, YMCA pool, which I thought we did or whatever, but, okay, so.
Okay.
But that, yeah, that, yeah, the next meeting is, oh, they're still in January here.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, right.
We're the twentieth.
And, and that's all.
Okay. Reports of department heads. Tom manager?
I have a couple of things. Um, so, next meeting, um, February twentieth, um, Ashley Bagwell, who is our lobbyist, will be here to give an update to the council. Um, Karen, um, if she was still here, she probably would have mentioned. We also have, the auditors will be here to give their, um, they will send a presentation and they'll talk through some things. They're not, they're not going page by page, obviously, of the audit, so, um, but they'll give their, their findings and that kind of stuff. Um, one of the, and I, and I apologize, because I've not been very good about sending the council the most updated list of bills that our lobbyist is, is kind of tracking for us, but one that she sent the other day, which was interesting to me, is, um, Senate Bill eight-twenty is a, um, proposal to increase infractions from one thousand to five thousand. So, um, that would be something the council could, if it's passed, could consider. Um, so, these paper bags are getting more expensive. No kidding, I'm kidding, I don't want calls tomorrow. Um, the, um, I, I am not sure, um, Jim probably will know best, I am not sure if this ever came to the council, so if it's something the council's not interested in, I, I apologize, but, um, the, uh, town works with a, um, broker on energy supply, so we get a discounted rate on our supply, um, and it is time to look at, I guess, prices. I do, I, I just learned about this yesterday, so I'm not. Um, so they are looking to, um, sign a, a contract with us, which won't start until January of twenty-twenty-six, but I guess the prices are, they can start signing up. So, um, our current price is eight point three eight cents per kilowatt hour. Um, the town apparently uses one point eight million kilowatt hours a year. Um, so, um, Dunbarva Power's current rate is eleven point seven four cents, so we're actually doing better than, than that. Um, the new ones coming in are like eight point six to eight point seven, depending on how many months, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight. Um, that's the current broker that we've been working with the last couple of years or this last contract. Ashley, Russ is actually reaching out to another broker to see if their prices are any different. So, I don't know if the council is okay, if as long as we're right around the same pricing that I sign off on a contract, or do you want to see it? I know from the brokers we've talked to, it's like time is of the essence, like tomorrow it could be a totally different rate.
Yeah, I remember we looked at this once in my time on the council, but I, I think it was like a quick, like it was like a, we need to know, so I would be fine with the, Tom manager, using her discretion there.
But you have to go January, you said.
They're try, um, no, they want us to get, so we have a contract and this pricing is good until Jan, well, December thirtieth, I guess, of twenty-twenty-five. There is a, this is the part that I'm not understanding, there is some kind of like auction that happens every year, so from June to December, our price will increase by two cents. This is something we can't control, even though we have a contract, that's what I'm not understanding. Um, and then January twenty-sixth, when this new pricing would go into effect, that those increases apparently are already included in these prices. Um, but there, apparently we, they want us to sign now to get this price for the January twenty-twenty-six.
Did everybody use a car?
I have, yes. Yeah. So, we're re, we're reaching out to another broker as well, just to kind of see what their thoughts are, um, so, yeah. And I can, I'm happy to send information to the council as well when I get it, or reach out for advice or anything.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Um, one last thing. Um, so, the council is aware, we have the grant for, um, the upgrades to the wharf, our additional upgrades, our ban shell, parking lot lights, walkway. Um, we had a, um, site plan done for that to submit to Critical Area Commission for lot coverage. Critical Area Commission has come back and said, you need stormwater totals, um, and basically the, what you're proposing, so a site plan showing this is where the, you know, um, ban shell's gonna be, what the parking lot's gonna look like. So, we got a quote, um, for this to get done at twelve thousand dollars. So, Kip and I have talked, we are able to cover it in our budgets, but I didn't want, make sure the council's okay. We have to do it in order to move forward through the approval with Critical, but when you see the twelve thousand dollar check come through, I wanted to let the council know what that was all about, so, since it wasn't originally budgeted in there.
And you've chosen the vendor, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, which they've done our, the other, the other stuff for us, so, yeah, so that's all I have.
Cool. Chief of police. Can we, can you come up? Recently, I've reached out to the chief a couple of times over, um, challenges with the school buses, I, I think being a bit of the worst offenders on the traffic safety front. I watched one just absolutely run a stop sign right in front of me, and so blew my mind a little, to be honest. Um, I think they are the, the biggest speeders through Little Kenwell Green Street also, and you and I had talked about you reaching out to the school bus division, and so I was just curious if that's happened, or if we've pulled over any school buses for running stop signs or, you know?
Since we last spoke, uh, we've had other complaints that have been generated in reference to that specific area as well. Uh, Canard Elementary, we've had complaints about parent pickup, how far they're out in intersections, where they're parking, et cetera. We've also had officers out there, uh, doing multiple enforcement efforts, which we found that school buses were in excess of the posted speed limit, but since we changed it to fifteen, it was very easy for them to get above that. Uh, we've even had them double the speed. Uh, we have made enforcement efforts where we have stopped a few school buses. Uh, we got a little bit of pushback from the school bus drivers, uh, obviously, and it was expected, uh, to the point where there's two entities when it comes to the school buses. There's one for the county that runs the school buses, and there's one for the private drivers and contractors for the school buses. Well, this just happened to be a private contractor, so, uh, there were some calls that were made. Uh, I think there's gonna be a meeting that's gonna be scheduled between both the county and the private contractor, or the oversight of the private contractor, myself and probably either one or a few of the council members as well.
I'd love to come.
Um, I think councilperson Keel is aware of, uh, some of the complaints, because I think they called him as well.
I mean, we don't want to be pulling over school buses.
No.
But they don't get to just do whatever they want either.
One hundred percent. I mean, it, it is certainly an enforcement effort that is, is everybody's issue. It's, it's community, the community has to look out for itself. I mean, we try to enforce it as best we can, but the school bus drivers have to be conscious of law, they have to obey the law just like everybody else, I mean, to make this thing work.
They're also traveling at, to me, the most dangerous time in that area around Canard, where you have a ton of kids walking to school, and then school bus drivers flying through stop signs, like not even slowing down.
Well, and they're not empty either, they're carrying our kids, so, you know, it's, it's precious load they're carrying while they're doing these things. So, uh, I, I see a meeting in the near future being generated. I mean, it is already discussed, I think, amongst the, uh, oversight of the school buses, so I'll be more than happy to be a part of that meeting.
Great, me too.
And, uh, I'm sure we can make something work out for all of us.
Yeah, I mean, I would love for us to discuss with Canard too, like, they need to figure something out, because drop off and pickup extends through both, through that intersection on both sides. Like, they need to phase it or do something. You can't just have that many cars in a line.
Right.
And then people try to go around them.
Yes.
To get through the intersection, but you also have, it's just a really dangerous situation there.
It is. They face this problem for, for a few years now, um, and I've met with Ms. Carey, and a lot of the issues come from, and even with the Cel, the Centerville Elementary School, when I talked to, um, Ms. Fornell, is they tried to segregate the parent pickup and drop off versus the, the school bus drop off, to allow enough time in between that there's not as much traffic in that area. Um, the problem is, a lot of parents don't listen. You know, they'll get there early, they want to get the best spot, it's like, oh, it could be anything from a stay-at-home mom to somebody that gets off early that, that it just wants to get a spot, is what we found. And they don't listen, so now we've got this additional traffic that doesn't need to be there. It's difficult for the buses to traverse the area and make their turns necessary. So, that is a lot of what we've found, is just don't pay attention, or they don't listen, and there's been emails sent, they've been talked to personally, they've sent out, uh, uh, actual letterheads to the parents and passed them out to them, saying, look, this is the scheduled time, you don't need to be here beforehand, and they still don't listen. So, um, how we correct that, I'm not sure, but it, it is certainly an issue that I don't foresee.
Are there no parking sign there? I know, um, in prior years, we stepped up the, the curb painting to make it a no parking zone, but.
This is Centerville Elementary?
At Canard, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, so, a, as far as the intersections or, or the problems we're having at the intersections, yes, the curbs have been painted to indicate you need to be back thirty-plus feet from the, the intersection. Um, however, right out there and try a force, if we give them one ticket, or they'll move, next day, they're right back, and they'll be a different person, and it's just constant, back and forth with them. So, we try to curb it as best we can with our resources. Um, we were out there the other day, they abided by the law while we were there, next day we weren't there, they were right back to it. So, it's, it's a never-ending saga right there. Um, I think, as I agree with council president Kaiser, that it needs to be something we draw the school into, and they need to have a better layout or a better pattern of parent pickup and drop off there that, that extends past just parking out on the street on both sides.
Because they're using that tiny lot on the side of the school to do it.
It's ridiculous.
Which fits only a fraction of the traffic they're generating.
Right.
I mean, it can be several minutes, that line that you end up sitting in, if you're trying to come up Little Kenwell at drop off time.
Absolutely. We've sat out there multiple times just to observe the, the chaos that takes place, and, um, I, I don't think the school or the school board has come up with any type of solution for that issue, um, so we'd probably have to go to the drawing board and really sit down and hash it out with them, so.
All right, well, thank you for your attention to that. I, I honestly could not believe my eyes when I saw a bus just fly through that intersection.
Yeah, and it's, it is certainly a problem, and I appreciate our community bringing it to our attention. I mean, we're out there enough trying to pay attention to it, and then, you know, it's just getting worse and worse, it appears.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom attorney? I have nothing, I think, okay. Kip, do you have anything? You covered it all. Okay.
Yeah, what else is there?
Um, Tom clerk?
Uh, just two things, um, all of you should have gotten probably, it was on the, on your way here, um, your invitation to the volunteer dinner, volunteer appreciation dinner, uh, March eighth at the American Legion, six to nine. Um, we hope you will be in attendance, if you can make it. Um, MML summer session is also, um, it's time to register for that as well, they have opened it up. Um, I do all the registration for elected officials for you, for everyone, to register you for the event. The hotel portal, you guys can go in at any time and get your own hotel reservations.
Yeah, that, the list, that's that policy.
I ask you to bring it up, because the policy is the council pays for everything. However, they've changed the portal for the conference registration, only the people who are, I forget what they're called.
Authorized users.
Authorized users of that can register people for the conference. So, if we re, we can register the council, and if for some reason someone can't, you are allowed to swap, put someone in there, um, but.
Being just totally candid, that policy felt like a solution in search of a problem to me, so I'm not overly concerned about someone skipping out on their MML registration. But I guess we can send them to collections if they do.
That is June, uh, twenty-second through the twenty.
And we reimburse the council for going, so it's, 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 you know, we can register, and it's not a.
Twenty-second to the what?
I think it's twenty-second through the.
Twenty?
I will double check, but.
It's that week.
Yeah, and I did send it to you also. Those that are interested, please let me know, I'd like to do the early bird before March fourth to get the fifty dollar discount.
Yeah, they no longer have the first-time attendee discount that they used to, so.
Okay.
And also, you'd set out budget subsidies? It just came out to the.
Yes.
What they do wrong.
Awesome, thank you for that.
For meeting space.
I rejected one of them, because I will not be there, if that's enough.
April tenth, I was like, oh.
I'm not coming.
Hopefully, we won't need that one, right?
No, I have, I have tried to arrange my work travel in such a way that I am back on Thursday evenings, but I couldn't get a flight back that day, early enough. All right. Now entering our second, or no, wait, yes, second citizens' forum is first. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council? Okay. Council roundtable, council vice president Keel.
Nothing to report?
Council member Beecham.
Nothing.
Thought you wanted to talk about snow.
I don't want to talk about it.
But it'll happen.
Does anybody not know what's gonna happen Tuesday?
Well, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is what's on my phone.
Tuesdays.
My children have to go to school.
High weather app says eight to ten inches.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
See, I was living in this ignorance is bliss, sort of.
Tuesday, eight to ten inches.
Really?
Followed on Wednesday morning, with another four to five, is that the numbers you're saying?
I don't accept.
Well, that jumps up a lot.
I reject the premise.
Trip to Florida.
Yeah, my kids have not gone to school yet this week.
Ain't gonna work.
My kids have been home from school all week, and next week, they're coming to your house, some schools closed. I blame you for this.
In their snowsuits.
Well.
Yeah.
Speaking about that, because you, you raised a good last, last meeting relating to responsibility of business owners clearing their sidewalks.
Right.
Because actually, you know, there was treacherous places, walking downtown to like walk, it was a safety issue.
Yes.
So I didn't know, I'm trying to remember, what was the outcome of that discussion as far as what we can do?
I was hoping that, first I was hoping we would not have another snowstorm.
I know, right, right.
Assuming we do have one, it'd be nice if we could do an inventory of some of the, the biggest offenders, send them a warning letter, should we ever have another snowstorm, citations might be in order. Because it is a public safety.
Yeah, I know, it absolutely is. And he would do that in the town.
Code enforcement and.
Can I give you a list? Because some of my neighbors are the worst. I mean, really, it's sad, you know, it's like.
I also, which I did not think about before the last snowstorm, so we'll probably do it this time. We do have an email we used to send out that talked about, here's how we do our streets, here's what we do, here's what we do not do, we do not clear driveways, we don't, you know, please shovel your sidewalks and, you know. Yeah, we'll, we'll send that out Friday.
You did that last time too.
I did it on the sidewalks.
Okay.
The last time, just specifically talking about, please make sure you, you know, because we did have some, but this one is a different, it, it's, it's got a little bit more information.
Have expectations for the plowing.
Yes, yeah, it's more about how we're, how we plow and how we, how Kip decides the street order that we go in and that kind of thing, so.
Well, before next Tuesday's snowstorm, there'll be letters that'll go out beforehand for the ones who had really done nothing, is that what I heard, or no?
I, I don't know that we were prepared to send letters out in anticipation of this storm.
Can we at least let the larger institutional offenders know that like, you know, they need to do their sidewalk?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, and I, there was one business that I called that Jim had contacted me about, but that property has a maintenance or a property management company, so it's not just the one business that takes care, like out on the main road.
Right.
I was not able, no matter what I did, could find a phone number for that. I found out who it was and where they're located, but I could not find contact, no matter what I searched for, so.
I'll send you their cell number. I'll send you their cell number.
The, the management company?
The owners, yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then, you know, similarly, governments and large nonprofits ought to do their sidewalks.
Yeah, I thought the county did a good job.
They didn't do Vincent and the Y Division either.
Yeah, I contacted both of them and they were going, I know the county went back and did more or redid Vincent and then I reached out to the Y.
The Y seems only concerned about the, the area around their building, which isn't their full property.
Right.
So they need to come all the way to the corner, they own all the way to the corner.
Yeah, because we have some property owners who don't realize the sidewalk is quite a bit of their property, even though it's downhill from them, you know?
Right.
It's still your property, yeah, so.
Yeah. All right, well, let's hope the snow doesn't come. You're really bumming me out.
Come.
Anything else?
No.
Councilmember Worth?
That was enough, I don't know. I don't know what you think.
Councilmember Huffer? All right, and I have nothing either.
Moved close.
Great.